Good evening, this is the October 23rd, 2018 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ask you to keep in mind our servicemen and women around the globe as well as our first responders. Thank you. According to Massachusetts general law, this meeting is being taped and I'm required to ask if there is anyone in the audience taping the meeting as well. If so, please identify. Seeing none, moving on to public comments. Mr. Florence, we have one public--
Can Mr. Bosworth and Mr. Mazurino sign up for public comments?
Okay. Gentlemen, welcome and please come forward so you can be heard in the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
We can. Please just say your name and your address, please.
I'm John Mazurino. This is Jeffrey Bosworth.
Can you say your address, too, please?
Sure.
Board, go ahead.
It's 11 Valley View Road, Williamsburg, Massachusetts.
Jeffrey Bosworth, 45 Noah Drive, East Long Meadow.
Thank you.
We have a small subdivision. We have sent you people-- Jeffrey wrote it. I checked it for grammar and signed it. You've got a rundown or a summation on what we've gone through over the last six, seven months. You've all received it?
Yes, it's in their packets.
Okay, all right. And I would like to do this thing as more constructive than anything else. I'd like to come to you with a request that we look into or at least consider the possibility of acquiring a town engineer, number one. We're faced with peer reviews. We've been-- we put that in writing. We'd like to get some consideration towards hiring a town engineer. Is that--
That's correct.
Is that where you want to be? And we'd like some oversight as to the process one goes through. We've been at this for seven months, starting in April. We came in with a preliminary, went through the conservation commission, then we went through preliminary plan, which you already know, and then we went through a definitive. And the other day, we were hit with a certificate of action. That's a lot of stuff that comes down that says what we have to do is provide information from everything from stormwater movement and this type of thing to the way roadways go, infrastructure, so on and so forth. We've done all of these things. We have a very competent engineer. He's put it together. He's been in business for years. And we are feeling a little bit frustrated by the process. I've indicated that to the town manager. I've come to her with complaints, and I don't want to do that here tonight. And I would like to be able to do this thing cooperatively between the town council, members of the town, and ourselves. If we could do something in a positive way that would make some change. We've got a town planner on board. She's got a-- she's been given a blank. She can do-- from what I understand from her contract, I've read it, but only scanned over. She's been given a free hand to do what she will. My concern is that we have a planning department, and this is the way things were set up back in the early 1900s. We set up planning departments and we set up zoning departments. Planning department was where we could develop, hopefully with the best interest of our township or whatever we're developing for. The planning department would be a guiding influence. The zoning people were there for enforcement. However, we've got a situation where we've got a foot-- the new, whatever her title is, has a foot in both camps. She's not only planner, but she's controlling zoning, too. There's something wrong with that picture. And that's something I would like to make clear to you at this point. Again, like I say, I don't really want to get into anything more than that. I'm hoping, because I think we're the ones that are breaking ground with our little three-unit situation. I've had less problems in Mesquomacque with 32 units and three medical buildings with a master plan, comprehensive permits, and letters of eligibility where the state gets involved. I've had less delay and problems. And I guess I'm trying to keep it as slow as possible. I want you people to at least consider what we're saying and possibly get on top of this if you can. He's got a lot of comments, and if he gets out of hand, I'll stop that.
Basically, one of the concerns is, we started this project back on April 13th was the initial application. I'm way past October 13th, and I'm still in the appeal period, which means I'm into November before I can even supposedly break ground. And as you all probably know, if you don't, asphalt factories shut down Thanksgiving. So I'm looking at sitting over the whole winter on my hands. I've done a great deal of investment in this property, and I thought by now I would have these lots sold. And here I sit, and I'm looking at another four or five months sitting on my hands. I want to know, you know, people work for people. They work for municipalities. They receive a paycheck every week. I'm not at that luxury. I put a lot of money out of my pocket, and I'm waiting for a return on investment. And I've been told, "Oh, you get paid in the end." Oh, really? When is that end coming, and at what risk to me, and am I guaranteed any money at the end? Who knows? It may be a loss. Plus, I'm trying to develop a project, small as it is, to bring tax revenue to the town. Well, guess what? That tax revenue's been delayed maybe a year because I can't do anything. We had a competent engineer in the town who resigned a little over a year ago. Since then, we don't have an engineer. We have two people running DPW. Neither one is a certified registered engineer or PE, okay? That has great concern for me as a taxpayer and as a contractor trying to do business in town because my project has been subject to two peer reviews at my expense. Granted, the town did absorb the cost of the first one because it wasn't done properly. And on the other side of the coin, I've never heard of a peer review on a preliminary definitive plan. It's just sitting together saying, "Hey, this is what we'd like to do. What do you think?" Okay, all right. Now I'm subject to a second peer review because we don't have anybody qualified in town to review the stormwater report. To me, that's a problem. You're costing me time, plus everybody who comes to town that wants to do a project is being doubly charged. I hire a very competent engineer who's been in business for 45 years, has a stellar reputation. It's sent out to another company who probably hasn't even been in business for 45 years, who's going to review his work. In the first peer review, I will say, came back totally incompetent review. First of all, they missed-- they said there was only three test pits done. There were actually five done. They couldn't read two on the plan. They said soil samples should be-- should call in a wetlands consultant. That was all done. It was all, you know, I had a wetlands consultant come in when I dealt with the DEP. The engineer, when he did the test pits, did soil samples. Then come to find out, this company doesn't even have a qualified soil engineer on staff. So how can you tell me I need to do this when you don't have everybody on staff that's doing it? The other part of the coin is, all these peer reviews are being sent to one firm. Then, on my last visit before the planning board, in the end of September, I was continued another week because, oh, my application's been in for a month, but the peer review company is too overworked that they don't have time to do it. So my engineer gets the peer review at 2:30 in the afternoon on Friday, and I'm meeting the planning board on Tuesday night, and he's got to have all these things corrected by that time. To me, there's so many other companies out there that can do this. Why are we sending everything to one company? And who makes that decision? How are we vetting these companies? You know, it's a little concerning.
Can you stop now?
Yes.
What I'm more concerned about is, we've already-- we've got a written contract with Columbia Gas and paid for a long time ago to put in gas. Of course, we know what happened up in North Attleboro and Lawrence and those places, so they're going to be tied up. So again, so there, because of the untimeliness of this situation, we miss it. Plus, home sales change. This is the front page of the Wall Street Journal on Sunday. Mr. Federucci, can you see that?
No.
I know a lot of Italians--
I've got bigger print.
Want to read it?
Well, essentially, what it does, because of rising interest rates and so on and so forth, we pretty much know what the picture is. The home sales are dropping. Things are changing. Real estate is a timely thing. You get on top of it the best you can. He's indicated to you already that people get a paycheck for their time. You also get a paycheck, supposedly, for what you produce. We try to do both, and we get neither. He's mentioned that. I don't want to be redundant about it. Again, I want you people to consider without us going on and on. I'm sure you have a dizzy schedule, but I want you to consider what we're saying to you. It's worthy of some thought, okay? And that's about all I have to say. I mean, there's a bunch of-- there's no sense in going on. You get the picture, I hope. And if you have any questions, please ask while I'm available, you know. Okay?
First, thank you for the letter and coming before us. Your frustration is noted, sincerely noted, and our response under public comments is to simply take the matter under advisement.
That's great.
As you indicated, it's an opportunity for us to, after this meeting, to have conversations with the town manager or the planner and the planning board. The council also has a planning matters oversight subcommittee that we could engage in the conversation as well. So please know that that will begin. Some form of that process will begin tomorrow morning. We'll take that under serious advisement.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Anything under council comments? I'm going to put that under correspondence.
I'd like to just add, this is not the first time that we've had feedback about processes taking an exorbitant amount of time. You know, I think there's a lot of us on here that have really worked hard on process improvement since the form of government has changed. And I think it's something that really needs to be taken a look at, the way we do business, the way we present ourselves to the public and provide services to them that allow them to do what they're trying to do in a timely fashion. I don't know all the details, but, you know, I mean, that amount of time it's passed and still being in the appeals process seems exorbitant and unfair. And there's been a few other people that have approached us with plans and have gotten stuck in like the vortex of, you know, the municipal government and have been really unhappy with the process. So if nothing else, I don't know if it would be worth engaging, as you mentioned, you know, the subcommittee services or talking through this with different department heads. And Denise, like what can you shave off? What is reasonable when there are things, you know, should have minimum, you know, time requirements and maximum time requirements of things that need to be done? You know, if somebody comes prepared with everything that they've had to do and spent the money to vet everything out, and then they're getting delayed, that's not reasonable.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number five, town manager's report. There you go. All ready.
It was a little long, longer than usual.
Just switching it up a little for you.
And actually, I have a pretty short report. As you all know, I was on vacation some of last week. So I came back and just with just a couple of days to sort of gather everything together. We've received notification on Friday, October 19th, that our free cash has been certified. So we can go forward with the MSBA funding. The directors of finance and IT and I are in the process of looking at statements of work from six companies for implementation of the HR Financial Software Capital Project. It's a rather complex project that, when completed, will allow for greater efficiencies and accuracy with many of our human resource and financial functions. Finally, I've attached an article about East Long Meadow that was in Business West last week. And it's a pretty positive article, I think. It's-- East Long Meadow is a great community. I also am looking forward to having a discussion about the comments that were made because there's much more to them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Question?
Yes.
With regarding the director of finance, as we're all aware, there'll be some time where she'll be out of the office.
She had baby on Sunday.
Yeah, okay, good.
Nice. Everybody's well.
Good. And who's going to be filling in that vital role during the budget process? Who?
The accountant, Olga. Olga Bones. I actually have a memo from Sarah with all the details on the different pieces, that who's handling what. But Olga will be the lead. Actually, some of the procurement-- Pam has agreed to help us because she's a procurement officer. She's certified as well. The-- this process that we were doing for the software, for the capital project, I asked for a recommendation for a third party. It's a very complex-- the proposals are very complex. And I contacted the IT, and both Sarah and I and Ryan have looked at the proposals, and our heads were kind of spinning at the end. And I said, "Well, let me reach out to this independent person." So there's all kinds of avenues that are being used to do the different pieces. Sarah has also offered that she would come in for certain things, such as capital, when we're ready to do that. That's something that we need to figure out, a timing for her. We can't get behind on that, and that won't be huge amounts of time. And she has volunteered to-- she won't be volunteering, but she has offered to come in for some things. You all know her. She's not the kind that-- she's a lot like I am. We're not going to let it just sit while we're home doing whatever. So there is a plan in place, and it will work.
Okay. So I know that software cost quite a bit of money, if I recall, $140,000?
That's what was set aside in the capital, yeah.
That was set aside. So that's a very important piece of what we'd like to do to move the town forward with regards to the payroll? So these folks are somehow knowledgeable about how to interface into our systems?
Yes. One of the requirements was that they needed to interface with Munis, so. And that's why it's only like a couple thousand dollars of that $140,000 to have experts come in and tell us what we're getting and who would do it best. Because we're not experts. We know what we need, but we're not experts in how we get that package that we'll be living with for a really long time.
Yes, okay.
Good, thank you. The next item is the approval of the October 9, 2018, meeting minutes. They're in your packet. If you've had a chance to look them over. When you have a chance, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So move it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the October 9, 2018, minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's stay here.
Thank you. Okay, under number seven, communication, correspondence, and announcements. I want to state under here, under the topic of correspondence, as council president, I received a letter in my home mail from approximately 100 residents, though in the letter they wish at this point to remain anonymous, stating their concern about the potential for rising property taxes. I asked the town clerk to speak with the attorney general's office to get some guidance on how to proceed with the correspondence that initially is penned in an anonymous manner. And the response from the open meeting law division of attorney general-- I want to make sure I'm saying that correctly--
That's correct.
--was that the matter needed to be placed either under communication or under council comments, and that it was up to the chair or the president of the body to make the decision where to place it. Obviously, I've chosen to place it under correspondence because that is, in fact, what it is. The other question was, does the correspondence have to be read verbatim into the record? And the response from the attorney general's office was that, again, the chair or the president of the body could either have it read verbatim into the record or craft a summary statement to capture the essence of the correspondence. I've elected to do that as well. And what I would like to do now is read the summary into the record. And I also want to state here that the counselors have the full text of the letter. And anyone, any resident in town can view the full text or ask for a copy of that simply by getting in touch with the clerk's office. That's on record with the clerk. So this is a summary statement regarding the citizens' letter of October 19th. Approximately 100 residents have written to state their concerns about rising property taxes. And on occasion, I'm going to quote, and this is a quote from the letter, "The regional dispatch project decision could have positive implications on our mill rate if handled correctly, or be detrimental to remain alone," end of quote. In the letter, residents inquire if negotiations with Hamden will be revisited. They express concern that certain counselors, quote, "have not studied the program diligently and do not understand the adverse consequences." Further, the residents say that, end of quote, "Further, the residents say that the state is encouraging towns to pair up and will offer grant money to help with the cost." Quote, "Staying solo equates to higher taxes for us and harder to remain in town as empty nesters. We feel we deserve better," end of quote. The letter also states that our local senator and representatives tout the advantages of community agreements to share services and be eligible for grant funding. The letter concludes by stating that more discussion is warranted around the report the council president made of her findings on dispatch and asks that this be stated in an open meeting. The residents who have penned this letter are prepared to go forward with the citizen petition process as outlined in the charter, and that would be Article 8, Sections 1 and 2, if necessary. This matter is not subject to council discussion tonight, but it can be placed on a future meeting agenda by request of any counselor. Any one of the residents who are part of this letter can identify himself or herself to the council president and can have the matter placed on a future agenda for open discussion. And further, if there is a desire to use the citizen relief mechanism as defined in the charter, I would ask that you reach out to the town clerk, who will give you specific guidance on how to follow the steps in that process. Respectfully, Kathleen Hill. And again, I'll mention that the full text of the letter is available on file with the clerk for anyone who would like a specific copy.
If I could, through the president, I would humbly request that we do put that on in a future meeting for council response.
Perfect, fair enough. So the matter, Mr. Florence, if you can get that on to our next agenda, our next meeting agenda, which will be--
November 13.
November 13. And again, for those who are watching from home, if you are part of this letter, we certainly would encourage you to attend the meeting and feel free and comfortable in stating any additional concerns that you would have. And appreciate your attention to that, if we could. Thank you. Okay, orders of the day, licensing matters. We have a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for November 10th, 2018, for a birthday party. That application and backup documents are in your packet. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
Right, I need someone to make it. I didn't need--
I'll make the motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Masonic Temple as outlined in their petition, application.
And I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for November 10th for the purpose of a birthday party. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The license is approved. Moving on to 8B, financial matters. Approve funding from the Massachusetts Building Authority for the feasibility study and initial schematic design for the Meadowbrook Elementary School roof project. And tonight, we have Superintendent Smith and Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Blair. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So this evening, having come before you and had the opportunity to explain the project that's going on at Meadowbrook through the Mass School Building Authority accelerated repair process, we're looking to move into the schematic design portion and feasibility study for the roof. But certainly, before we move into, hopefully, a motion to appropriate that money if there are other questions that maybe we didn't answer on the 9th, I'd be happy to answer those.
Looks like we're good.
Okay. I think at your places, you have--
We have the specific wording that has to follow just the way the MSBA requires it to be.
Otherwise, the MSBA powers hunt us down.
That's okay. We're happy to comply with their--
Or they take your money, maybe.
Exactly.
So that would be Mr. Anderson.
I move that the town of East Long Meadow appropriate the amount of $122,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of the feasibility study and the initial schematic design for the capital project to replace the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School at 607 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program. This would include all the incidental costs as related thereto and for which the town of East Long Meadow may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, and the set amount to be expended under the direction of the Meadowbrook Elementary School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the East Long Meadow Town Council, with the recommendation of the town manager, will transfer from the town's free cash, set amount of $122,000. The town of East Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's board of directors vote to invite the town to collaborate with the MS-- MSBA on this proposal, proposed repair project, any cost the Town of East Long Meadow incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the Town of East Long Meadow.
Thank you.
That is a lawful.
That is.
That's the motion, right?
That's the motion.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the very specific and long motion to approve funding for the feasibility study, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very, very much.
Approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck with it. Thank you.
No issues left.
Madam President, do we, do we need a roll call vote?
Do we need a roll call vote?
Yeah, I don't know that you need it, but it can't hurt to do it.
Well, it won't hurt. The question's been suggested that perhaps it would be best, because money is involved, to have a roll call vote, so let me back up and say. All those in favor of approving the $122,000 for the feasibility study, will this will be a roll call vote?
Aye.
Mr. Federici?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
As president, I, my vote is aye. Mr. Kane?
Aye as well.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, prior year's bills. Obviously, Ms. Menard is, has more important matters at hand. Denise, will you be speaking on that?
The other Ms. Menard will-
The other Ms. Menard.
There were three bills which, out of the, it's thousands a week, I swear, that these happened to fall through the crack. One was miscategorized and only found after. Another had a change in personnel, the person that processed the stuff was no longer there. They found it in a folder on her desk. It was passed, it was passed. And the other was misdirected from one department. That particular one, I can tell you the exact example, what we're trying to do is really get a very clear picture of IT expenses, and some things fall in different departments. And if we catch them in time, we try to re-categorize them in, into the IT, if they're related to IT. Departments would purchase, for instance, a laptop, but then you don't get a clear picture. So there's been a little bit of adjusting, and that's what it was. There was a laptop that was purchased by a department that, then the bill fell through the cracks. I won't say what department, but the person broke their arm, and then the bill sort of got left aside, so it was just found not too long ago and given to IT where it should have been originally. So it was sort of just lagging with somebody fairly new that didn't know what they were doing, and as far as should it be IT or should it be their department? So it's just a little bit of adjusting. Certainly, the amount of money involved is insignificant.
Can you, just for the council's information, state the total of the bill, those three bills?
It is $1,623.64.
Combined with the three?
All three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So from a procurement standpoint, somebody doesn't have to go through the IT department to order a laptop?
I guess the practice was that they would go through IT, and then they would order it themselves instead. So it's an adjustment on both sides. It's an IT adjustment as well, that going forward, IT equipment needs to go through the IT department, not to individual departments. I think it was a past practice that if you wanted a, and it was approved, that you'd get a tablet, for instance, that the tablet would come out of your department's budget. Just for a clear sense of how much we're spending on IT, I don't care if it's approved by whatever department, and whatever department is using it, it is still an IT expense, and we're moving those over to IT. So it was authorized by IT, they were aware of what was being gotten, it was appropriate for, for the department to have it. There was just miscommunication of how it would be charged off in the past. So it was a practice that it was quite often done at the department's expense, and it shouldn't be any longer.
Right, so you corrected that?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Further discussion? We have a motion to approve the prior year's bills as noted by the town manager.
Roll call again.
Can you add from free cash?
And we're adding from free cash, okay. Do we have a motion there, Mr.?
Yes.
Yes, we do, okay.
I'll read the motion if you'd like. So the motion stated, approve the funding for three years prior bills totaling $1,623.64 from free cash.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are we requiring a roll call on this as well? I would think not on this. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the payment of three prior year bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you for that. Nothing under old business, Mr. Florence? None. Under new business, the town manager's performance evaluation process, as I stated before, in an effort to align Denise's evaluation process with the anniversary date of her contract, it's necessary for us, the council, now to undertake another performance review. And I'll note that this one is only for six months, Denise is aware of that, this is on the advice of our attorney. And that being said, this evening, at the conclusion of our meeting, I have the evaluation documents for you, as well as a progress report that I asked Denise to write up regarding the particular goals that were set forth a year ago, or back in May, I should say. And you'll have all of that information. There, you'll, will be provided with an envelope that you will use to return your completed evaluation to the clerk's office, and you have until the actual next time we meet, Tuesday, November 13th. I will appoint interested counselors, up to three, with an alternate, to serve as the performance evaluation ad hoc committee, and so if you are interested in that, please send me an email response. I will note that the timeline is very aggressive. Having been on the previous evaluation committee, subcommittee, it was only necessary to meet the one time, to aggregate the results, and to write a formal report which would be entered into the record and conducted in open session. And so my goal is to have that piece available for our November 28th- 7th, I'm sorry. November 27th council meeting. So if you serve on, choose to serve on this committee, your window is the 13 days between, knowing that you also have to work with the clerk to post an agenda for that committee. So any questions about the process? We're trying to keep it simple and straightforward. Thank you. Okay, public hearings. We are past 6:30, so we're good to go. Public hearing number A, public hearing on the issue of determining the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2019. As I just stated, the reason for this public hearing is to do that. Let me start by introducing the counselors from your left to right, Counselor Federici, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Ford. In a minute, I will ask the clerk to read the notice into the record, I will open the public hearing, and the applicant, which will be our assessors, will present their plan to the council. They will have an opportunity to provide any input. And anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, I would ask that you please come forward so that the microphone can pick up your comments. And again, identify yourselves and your address. If there's no further comment, I will close the hearing, and then the council can discuss at its will any matters pertinent to that. And the council, at that point, will be compelled to take a vote or make a decision, or take the matter under advisement. So that being said, Mr. Florence, can you please read the legal notice into the record?
Yes, ma'am. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18-25, that the East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM, in the media room at the East Long Meadow Council on Aging, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow. The purpose of this public hearing will be on the issue of determining the percentages of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2019. All interested East Long Meadow taxpayers are welcome to attend this hearing to present any oral or written comments on this matter. In the event a taxpayer is unable to attend the hearing, written communications may be submitted in advance to Ms. Kathleen G. Hill, Town Council President, 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. And with us this evening, we have Diane Bishop, our Director of Assessing, as well as our three assessors, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Grudgeon, and Ms. Gadini. So any and all, please come forward, any or all, at your pleasure.
Thanks for having us, Marty Grudgeon, Chairman of the Board. Diane, we'll get into the, more of the technical aspects of the classification hearing. I'm just going to talk about our values a little bit for the public and you guys, because we have more of an increase that we've had since '07 and '08. Seventy-three percent of single-family homes went up between 3% and 6%. Industrial, commercial, and condominium stayed about even. So what I'm talking about is single-family homes. So 73%, it's one of our highest increases in a while. Our taxes are based off 100% assessment. And how we determine our values are the sales from 2017, and arms-length sales that are approved by the DOR. So last year, what happened, in case you are not aware, you might have a property assessed for 200 and sold for 240. So you go, all right, our assessment's a little off, we look into it, we go on MLS, Diane looks at it, they may have updated something, granite siding windows, but last year, they may not have. So we don't, we do mass appraising, so we don't look at one sale. But then all of a sudden, another one assessed for 200, sold for 250, assessed for 280, sold for 350. So that is what happened in 2017. Houses sold quite quickly, so we don't chase sale price, but the DOR wants us to be in between 90 and 110%. And some of the ratios are given, which were a lot, were in the 80s. So we try to get, we were up to like 95% of value. That's how an increase happens with a town. They approve all arms-length sales, there are some anomalies out there, but that's where we ended up at, our increase. Some are a little higher, some are lower, so properties went down, but we're going to be a good increase, 73% went up between 3% and 6%.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
And so here we are again, this tax classification-
For the year already.
-hearing. And again, we are, the town council has to make a decision whether we're going to have one tax rate or a split tax rate, and it's all depending on how you would like to allocate the tax levy. So you will also have an opportunity, if you choose to adopt a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption, but we will discuss what the benefits are, or if it is even beneficial to our town. So we did hand a packet out, and if you go to fiscal year 2019, tax rate classification, you will see on the very first line is where we stood last year. So for fiscal 18, you will see what our tax levy and what our tax rate was. Every year, the Department of Revenue allows us to increase our levy by 2.5% and any new growth. This past year, we had $578 of new growth, which was approved by the Department of Revenue. We are also allowed to include any debt exclusion, which was close to $700,000, which brings our total taxable levy, the most the town can raise and appropriate, at $43,470,933. So I know the town council has been very conservative while they are, were doing their budgeting, because they did not want to spend up to that levy limit, and we all are very appreciative of that, especially when our tax bills go out. You're going to find that we left, or you left, a good amount, close to 2.4 million of excess levy capacity that we could have spent, but did not spend, as we were trying to be very conservative in, in the budget.
Just want to add in, our new growth is very high, too. New growth is, you know, new homes coming in. For example, this year, we only have nine new homes, so our projected new growth next year will be a lot lower, but East Long Meadow's new growth has been high for six, seven years, and very strong. But we expect it to dip.
And again, a lot of this is one-time new growth. For instance, Brownstone 2 just went on the tax rolls, that was a large amount. And we've had a lot of our utility companies, Mass Electric, New England Power, and I believe it's Columbia Gas, that has had a lot of new growth, which you cannot project until they send you their numbers. It's not like you can see the construction happening, but we do know that they're in town, and we do know that we look for it. So we believe, I believe it was about $6 million additional value just from those three utility companies. So that's huge for us. If you do get to the fiscal page 2019, a summary of tax rate options, you will see on your left-hand side that if we had a factor of one for residential and a factor of one for CIP, which is also known as commercial, industrial, and personal property, the tax rate is projected to be $20.55. 82% is residential, 18% is commercial, industrial, and personal property. Then you can see what would happen if you decided to shift the tax levy. So if you were to shift 5%, the tax rate would come down minimal to residential, and it would go up a good amount to commercial. And you can see from this chart, just going in increments, 5, 10, then up to 25, to the maximum of 50, you can see how the tax rate would change. Do you want me to go further into detail on that, or? Okay. We do have an illustration for our taxes from fiscal 2008 to fiscal 2019, and I think the key thing is the levy percentage. You can see that the Town of East Long Meadow really hasn't changed, it's been holding between 82% to 83% residential with the remaining commercial, industrial, and personal property. We did show you, for comparison purposes, the fiscal 18 taxes for single-family homes in communities that are around us that we feel are comparable to our community. And these are the same ones. We do have an asterisk next to Wilberham, because they have a regional school district, so that number looks a little bit different than everyone else's. And South Hadley, because they have fire district 1 and 2, there's an extra tax onto their regular tax rate. So that is my portion for discussing- So that is my portion for discussing a tax factor, whether it be a tax factor of one or if the board feels, I'm sorry, the council feels that it should be a split tax rate. So as you are thinking about that, I'm going to just jump into quickly the residential exemption and the commercial, and then I'll open it up to any questions you might have for myself or for one of the assessors. Residential exemption is really for communities that have a high, high rental, single-family homes. And it doesn't change what the tax rate, overall tax rate for all property. All it changes is the tax rate for certain residential properties and shifts the burden for owner-occupied, smaller homes to bring that tax rate down. And rental properties would have a higher tax rate, but also owner-occupied homes that are larger homes would have a higher tax rate. So you're not, all you're doing is shifting the money around. There are 16 municipalities out of 361 that actually use a residential exemption, and they are more towards Boston and the Cape, where there's a lot more rental units. And the last option would be a small commercial exemption, and as we have discussed in the past, you could vote it. It only affects commercial and industrial properties, and it only shifts the tax burden from commercial, industrial properties that do not meet the criteria that the state has set out. If your property is under $1 million and you have less than 10 employees and it's certified by the state, it's possible that you, that commercial building may be able to receive an exemption. Unfortunately, if you have three businesses in a commercial building and one has 10 employees or less and the others do not, it throws that whole building out of the possibility of having a small commercial exemption. There are approximately, from the best I could tell, about 42 commercial properties that may, not would, but may receive an exemption out of the 416 commercial and industrial properties. So it's just a shift. Again, 14 communities in fiscal '18 out of 351 have adopted that. So that's my presentation, and I am open to any questions you may have.
Actually, I have to first ask if there is anyone in the audience who has a question or a comment regarding the tax factor in general or anything in this evening's report. And it's safe for me to say that this actual presentation, it looks like PowerPoint to me, will be on the website for the public.
We did bring handouts for people.
For the handouts here, but it can be placed on the website tomorrow or later this week.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, sir. Please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Charlie Christensen, 19 Baymore Drive. I own a couple businesses in town. I'm vice chair of the East of the River Five-Town Chamber. I'm here to thank you guys for your past support of a single-rate tax. It's very important to the businesses that we represent, that we maintain that. You know, the businesses bring a lot to town, they support a lot of the community events, try not to draw too many services, and we're hopeful that you'll continue to do so with your vote tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Hi, Henry 54 Ridge Road, East Long Meadow. I'd also like to speak in favor of a single tax rate, going to the point that I have never heard of a split tax rate that ever got back to single 50/50. In fact, it always edges and edges and edges until the businesses are sort of driven out of town. So I feel very strongly, and I hope the council will consider flat tax rate.
Thank you.
Any other comments, public comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now this is an opportunity for the council to interact with our assessors or have any questions.
Yeah. A question regarding a small commercial exemption. Has the assessors' office been approached by businesses to take out an application or to apply for anything like of this nature in the past?
I've been here for almost 10 years, and I have not been approached by one taxpayer or commercial business owner as of yet.
Okay, so of the 42 potential that may qualify, none of them have ever come forward to show any interest. Okay. Thank you.
First, it was Mr. Kane, and then Mr. Anderson. Like school.
Oh, we'll go right around the table. I just wanted to thank you for a great report because the information's very helpful and...
And it's user-friendly, not to jump in.
Yeah, yeah, it's very easy to understand, it's very straightforward, nothing much has changed from last year. And does your board, I haven't really heard of recommendation from your board, but do you have a recommendation for us?
I don't think that our board really is giving recommendations of the information that has been provided.
Okay, that's, that's fine. If that's what you want to stay with, I would, I would just mention some of the projects that we have coming up, like 330 Chestnut Street and such. And it would be detrimental to change from the program that we're at at this point in time, especially when we're trying to attract new business and fill up some of these commercial buildings. It would be a disadvantage to make a change at this point in time. So I guess you know where my vote will be on this, so, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Natural segue to his point, another project we have coming potentially is a solar array. My question is, are solar arrays, because they're sort of like, maybe like a utility, are they taxed as a business, or is that a negotiated pilot-type agreement that needs to be entered into?
That's a very difficult question.
All right, I didn't mean to throw it at you, I'm just thinking about it.
Majority of communities enter into pilot agreements, and generally, a 20-year pilot agreement. The pilot agreements usually is more beneficial for a solar company, so they have a set dollar amount that they know that they need to pay for taxation. Of recent, we've been having some appellate tax board cases where they're finding some solar is exempt, and some of the language of the law is very gray. So there is a lot of legislation happening right now, so I really, I can't answer if it's going to be beneficial to the town or not beneficial, if we will see tax dollars or if it will be exempt. The land would always be taxed because we know that the land is a piece of real estate. As far as the actual solar arrays, everything is still up in the air through the legislation.
Could I ask a question, please? Does the value of the land go up if the, from vacant land to, to something that has a value now?
It should go up, but I don't think we will see as, as large of a value because of the certain parcel of land that has a proposed solar array.
Yeah.
Being a landlocked piece of land, I'm not sure the type of value that we could...
I mean, as an appraiser, it's still what the value is as vacant.
Really?
Yeah.
Interesting. Just a quick comment, I don't want to, you know, mimic what Counselor Kane said because he basically said what I was thinking, but he was talking about future. I was thinking, we had a, you know, we have, we've had a couple quote-unquote scares in town where Milton Bradley left, Carter Mundy came in, Rubber Bay Newell was sold to Stanley Black and Decker, and it was a question of are they moving to New Britain or are they staying here? And I think the fact that we have an advantageous tax rate for the, for the commercial businesses is something in our favor when these, when these different businesses decide to stay here.
Yeah, we discussed that prior to the meeting when those Americans saw, we didn't worry about a company leaving as much as the Davises, we're happy to keep it here. But they are, you know, more independent and have factories all over the world, so it's a different attitude.
And I'll add that I think it's worth restating what Mr. Christensen made reference to, and that is that we're fortunate in this community that businesses go out of their way to support the community. Having spent a fair amount of time with the school department, oftentimes, some initiatives that the students were involved in that required funding, you know, some funding, small funding sources. We never fell upon an occasion where a business turned down the opportunity to get involved with kids. So that says a lot for the businesses that they're happy to be here. We have a vibrant business community, and I think a lot of the support that they give back to the town is not visible to the public to make things go. Something as simple as our annual Fourth of July celebration, two years ago, we fell into, things were on the rocks, so to speak, and it was the business community that came forward and tried to jumpstart and breathe life back into it. So I would echo that, that we're, this is a good town to do business in, and we're pleased with that.
Just have a quick comment through the chair. So I, I think the group has been somewhat single-minded in, in the sense of trying to be fiscally responsible, and just because we can spend doesn't mean we should. So, and that, that took a lot of work. Those budget seasons, you know, having gone through a couple now, were painful, and we had to make tough decisions. But it's the right thing to do. You know, I have parents that live in Long Meadow, and, you know, they're elderly and they struggle. And if you look at the comparison here between us and them, to where their middle rate is and where their assessed values are, that's a hardship for, you know, empty nesters. So, you know, it's something I think that we're all pretty proud that we're trying to support the municipality and the people in it that rely on services, but doing it in a somewhat conservative manner.
And the best, the best emphasis really is, you know, people have values and tax rate, really is the average tax bill. That's the best part of that graph. When you compare them all to towns, look at the average tax bill. It really tells you what, you know, what you're paying.
Good.
Or a lot lower than Amber Stu, which is not on there.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain that motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve that the Town of East Long Meadow adopt, for the fiscal year 2019, tax rate a factor of one, a single tax rate with no residential or small commercial exemptions. So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving a single tax rate factor of one, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the report. Congratulations.
Thank you. There is going to be a document that will pass around.
That we have to sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do not excuse the delay, your work.
Okay, moving on to, where is my agenda? We have a second public hearing tonight scheduled for 6:45. We'll be on that, so we can go forward with it. And this public hearing is to discuss a new wine and malt beverage on premises liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle. Again, councilors Vetterici, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Ford will follow the same procedure of, that we just went through, an opportunity first for the petitioner to respond, comments from the audience, and then the hearing will be closed and the council will move forward with that. So I will open the meeting and ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC DBA Chipotle, 42 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a wine and malt beverages on premises liquor license. The Town Council will hold a public hearing on this application on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 6:45 PM in the Council on Aging Media Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. And before us tonight is our applicant, Rashi Mangalik.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Mangalik, yes.
Mangalik, thank you.
Thank you.
So please.
Sure.
For opportunities to...
Of course. As she said, my name is Rashi Mangalik with Dermot Coltien Miller, representing the entity Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado. With me is Amanda Adams, who is the proposed manager of record for this location. And we see your approval tonight for a new wine and malt liquor license at 42 Central Center Square, excuse me. Amanda has about nine years' experience in the restaurant and industry, with three years of those being managing a Chipotle in Chicopee. So she has the experience to run this premises. Additionally, the hours of operation will be 10:45 AM to 10:05 PM. There's 46 indoor seats with no outdoor patio.
Are there any comments or responses from the audience? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and then offer the council an opportunity for questions or responses. Mr. Anderson.
This is to Amanda through council, is the Chicopee place, did it have a full liquor or, or no liquor or beer and wine?
Chicopee has no alcohol at all.
Okay. So this will be your first instance working with, managing a place with a liquor license?
Yes.
Okay.
Question as well?
Yes.
My experience with Chipotle is that it's a family-type restaurant where a lot of young children go as well. How are you going to break out the areas for allowing alcohol to be served with minors very present?
Right. To my understanding, the, everyone will be ID'd who asks for any kind of beer or wine drink, and that's only served once you're at the, at the cashier, and that's only served to the person who asks for it and presents the ID. So if you're over, if you're under 21, then you wouldn't be given that drink.
Okay. How prevalent is this in Chipotle, in the, in the franchise?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't, I, you know, we were discussing it earlier in the little, and I don't know of any that have a liquor license.
Right.
So why now and why here?
It's been just part of the business plan for Chipotle for a few years now. They're starting to implement it in different cities. As you can see, I provided a list of other liquor licenses they have in the state, and they are starting to accumulate. They just received a liquor license in Brockton earlier this year, as well as one of the Boston locations. So it's just, it's part of the plan that they wanted to implement. Some locations have all alcoholic beverages licenses, some have malt and wine.
I have a question.
Yes.
Something I'm sure you've thought of, but I would just ask, if somebody goes up to the counter to buy the drink that you're talking about, the beverage, and they're obviously ID'd and they're 21-years-old, what measures would you be taking to make sure that that person isn't bringing that beverage back to a table where kids under 21 are getting their hands on those beverages?
I can take this one. We have very open dining rooms, and we have very active dining rooms. As a general manager, my job is to be in the dining room. I have not worked in a Chipotle where we serve alcohol, but I know that I'm very involved in the dining room, between me and my staff. I can promise you that that wouldn't really be an issue because we're present, we're there, we're speaking to our guests, we're, you know, call it table touching. So between my cashier and my front line and the managers on duty, we are very present in that atmosphere of the restaurant, so.
So from the standpoint, how this varies from other Chipotles, how, how many of your staff will be certified to serve?
Right now, all of my managers are already certified, and any cashier that becomes a cashier with the company will also be certified through the company, so. Anybody that would serve alcohol would be certified.
Interesting. Just as a, a piece of friendly information, the businesses around Center Square, such as Walgreens and Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, as well as the public library, are because of the nature of the... of the nature of the individual, are a magnet for middle school and high school students from two o'clock on. And that can be good. It's good for the retail side of their businesses, or the library, but there, it presents some challenges as well, because kids are kids, whether they're twelve or they're eighteen, but that is something you should just keep in the back of your mind, that this will now be a place, and they will migrate directly over there, because your business plan is to be family and children-friendly, and so you probably won't have any shortage of middle and high school students taking part in your products, but that goes to the, the kind of vigilance that you're probably going to have to employ to, to make this work.
Great, good to know. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Through the chair, for the chair.
Yes.
Where's the license coming from? Was it an existing license, or one on the shelf?
I would, it's a, we have, it's vacant, we have.
There's two more beer and wine.
Right.
And they're going for the fourth, or the fifth, so they do for this one.
Yeah. So again, for the viewing audience there, the ABCC allotts a certain amount of licenses in each category to a municipality based upon its formula relative to its population. So we have five available licenses in that category. This will, if it's approved, will become the fourth of five, and there would be one more that would be available for application down the road. Other questions?
I would just say that, you know, this is, gives me a little solace in the fact that they have the corporate structure and backing. This is not the first one out of their vast portfolio that's going to be serving beer and wine. You know, so for tracking purposes, you know, being able to track people that are core certified, you know, gives me a, a little bit more comfort, I should say. So, I'm okay. Would you like to motion?
Hearing none, I'll entertain that motion.
Okay. I'd like to present a motion to approve wines and malt beverages on premises liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, DBA Chipotle, Forty-two Center Square.
So moved?
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
When's the grand opening?
December eleventh. Thank you very, very much. Yep.
Mr. Flores, nothing under executive session. Then seeing no other business before, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second, second, third.
Motion's been made and seconded and thirded to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, that's seven fourteen, and we will be back here in session on Tuesday. Thank you, and good evening.